Now I'll call the meeting to order. First order of business is the approval of the minutes from our previous meeting, which the commissioners received a digital copy already.
I move the minutes to be approved as presented.
Second, the motion?
I have a motion and a second that the minutes be presented, or be approved as presented, excuse me. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passed. Moving on to Presidents and Commissioners' reports. I attended the Planning Commission meeting. We talking more about our comprehensive plan. Got an update from the Subcommittee. And Mr. Della Plane and Mr. Ronkin and Hunter Thorne and Brian Edwards are heading that up. They have contacted attorneys at the West Virginia University Land Use Sector, the university there, to solicit them for some help. Also, we have had the illegal salvage yard served. And other than that, I just wanted to report the numbers like I do. Last month, eleven thousand one hundred twenty-three dollars in building permits and two point five nine million in construction. To a total sum of sixteen million one hundred eighty-two thousand since the beginning of the fiscal year. I did also attend the County Economic Development Authority meeting. Basically, standard business, other than we did go over the Cape and Bridge Tech Park as it involves Bungie, the name of the business there, and then also Aquabank Shrimp Farm. Then S.J. Moore's gave us some updates on what they're doing with their lot. Other than that, I met with the grant writer. Did speak with Director Malcolm, who's in here today, so I'm not gonna go on about that. Everything else you gentlemen were a part of, so I have nothing further. Commissioner Eglinger, did you have a report, sir?
I don't have too much to report on today, Commissioner. I'll just take a bit of my time to, I just wanna thank and recognize Commissioner Hott for his past eighteen years of service as a Commissioner. I've enjoyed serving with Bob, and he's been here three terms. This is a hard job. Maybe not so much physically work, but it's very taxing as far as mentally. Anybody that can successfully be elected three times in a row for such a job must have been doing something right. So, like I said, most of my meetings I reported on at our Commissioner meeting there a couple weeks ago. And with the holidays, I didn't have very many meetings, but I just wanted to take this time to recognize Commissioner Hott there again, since this, unless we have an emergency meeting between now and the first of the year, this will be his last regular meeting. Just wanted to publicly recognize how much I appreciate his service for the community. And he always put Hampshire County first, and that's pretty evident in everything he's done. So, thank you, Commissioner Hott.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hott?
The only thing I did was, I didn't attend any meetings. I did attend the conference call with the Finance Committee with the Region Eight Solid Waste, where we went over the audit and approved the audit, and are gonna present it to the full board at the next meeting. I think that meeting will be in January. But that's all the meetings that I attended. And I wanna thank Brian and you, David, for the last, David, I served with you four years. I served, I guess, eight with Brian. And we, sometimes we've had disagreements, just like I was speaking about when we were with Nathan, but we've got past them, and I think that shows a mark of commitment and a mark of understanding and maturity when we can do that and without holding grudges and trying to get back at people for different things. And I also wanna thank the employees that in the county. I think we've got a great workforce, and they have, working together, they've all, whatever we've accomplished, it wasn't me, it was everybody, all of us working together to try to get things done. And I appreciate that. And as Brian said a little or two, it is, to me, it's the toughest, and a lot of people have heard me say this, but it is the toughest job I've ever had. And when you're committed to doing the job, it's gonna be tough. And you're gonna lay awake at night and think about decisions you're gonna have to make for certain things. And it's stressful. It's not, a lot of times, the general public, they hear about politicians doing this and that, and I don't even like to be called a politician, because I try not to ever let politics get involved in what we do. So, having said that, I wanna thank all of you, and I wanna thank the county for putting up with me for eighteen years.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. President, if I could just interject one thing?
Sure.
I did look into the records, and Commissioner Hott is one of two Commissioners who served three consecutive terms, the other being Jim Miller. Looking on back, there was a George Harriet back in the forties, fifties, who was elected twice in a row at two different times, but there were six years in between. And so, for consecutive years of service, Commissioner Hott's in good company.
Thank you for that. Yes, Bob, you mentioned things getting political, and from what I've seen, there's definitely a clear, very clear difference between a statesman and a politician. And I think I went on a little bit about how I feel about you at your retirement party, so I won't bore you to death again. But I do appreciate the lessons I've learned from you. Number one, your ability to not hold a grudge. That, you can really get a thick skin doing this job, or you can take every little shot to heart, and you never get out of your own way. But that, by far, showed me how humble you really are. I know you can be tough from time to time, but you have a short memory when it comes to disagreements, and it shows a forgiving heart, and that means a lot. But I really appreciate you, and I won't go on and on. We'll move on here. But thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dan.
Mental health training funding for HCSA. Mr. Malcolm?
Morning, Mr. President. How are you all doing?
Morning. Thank you.
Mr. Turner has laid most of it out there. I just wanted to discuss the first two parts of it. The one was Critical Incident Stress Management Training, which would be with WVU University Fire Service Extension. I talked to Ralph yesterday. He is going to set the schedule. This will be a two-series class, and to my knowledge, it'll be open to everyone in Hampshire County, first responder-wise. He is looking at, when they get done, it'll be a three-day class, probably be held either at the Hampshire Park, possibly, in the Conference Center. If it's available, it'll be March, and then the second class of it will be in April. And it's two different levels. It gives them a level of Certification One, Certification Two. And they'll actually be Critical Incident Stress Manager Counselors. Now, they won't have a counseling degree or anything like that, but they will have certification and a level of training in it. The other one will be a seminar-type class with David Hodges from Charleston Fire Department, Lieutenant, and his will probably also be in there at the Hampshire Conference Center. Be good to be able to use our own facilities. And then I'll let Ms. Turner speak on the rest of it there.
So, and all of this is just for that money that was allotted by Office of EMS for mental health? It's not asking you guys for money, it's just to allocate that money to be able to be used?
Have we got that yet?
I'm sorry?
Have we got that funding yet, or do we? How do we?
No, you all received that funding when you received the hundred and twenty-five thousand also.
Okay.
But you have to allocate it by the end of the year.
This is eighteen, okay, I understand now, okay.
So, and then the next part, there's two options that we have with this. This is looking for a mental health first aid. This is something we can use for our first responders, but also give the classes to, like, the everyday citizen, just like you do with regular CPR and first aid. The one option, which is what I would prefer to see us, what I would prefer to see us do is I've talked with Grant County and Hardy County Emergency Ambulance Authority, and to see if maybe we can pull resources, and instead of just sending a handful of people to become instructors, to actually host an instructor course, where we would get sixteen instructors out of it locally, with us all working together in combination with the leftover money from this, and then some of the money from the SAMSA grant. And then if that were to not come to fruition, then we would just send people using that money to the courses elsewhere.
So, they're actually getting three different lesson levels?
Yes, and what is attached is actually the EMS Coalition for the state of West Virginia's, what they want for their task force for 2023 and 2024. And you'll see on, I think it's the fourth page, that the mental health first aid force is actually very high on their list for wanting to get this done for the providers. So, this would put us as very forward-thinking to get this initiative done that even larger municipalities have not been able to do.
Does this mimic the Mon County approach? Did you guys look at that one? I remember when I talked to Mr. Ratliff, he had recommended their approach. Did you happen to look at theirs?
I actually did speak with the CEO of Mon County, and this is one of the things, because they are part of the coalition. We're one of only very few counties that are not part of that, so this is a component of that, yeah.
Good, good. Well, I knew it was kinda loose parameters on the money, so you had to kinda get creative. So, I can certainly appreciate the work you put into it here. I'm certainly in favor of this proposal. And there's really no deadline on this specific money that I saw.
Yeah, I think it just had to be allocated by the end of the year.
Had to be allocated by the end of the year, is my understanding.
That's right. Okay, okay. I don't see anything that I would change, of course.
Now, one thing, the only thing that's different that you'll see here is, is on the coalition, it talked, the price is slightly different. The reason that it's slightly higher is because it doesn't take into account, you have to get the mental health first aid certification before you can take the instructor course.
Okay.
So, that's where that difference comes from.
Are you looking for a motion for this?
Sure, yes, sir, yes, sir.
All right, I'll move that the Hampshire County Commission worked with HCSA in the mental health training funding program, and with following the procedures laid out here this morning.
And I'll second that, but I wanna also add that this money that we talked about, the eighteen thousand, is allocated, that's what we're allocating that money for?
Yes, sir, yeah, yeah. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ted, do you have anything on the, being that this is our last meeting for the end of the year, on the radio, the extra monies? I got your email, but it'd be nice if we acted on something. I don't wanna put you on the spot, though.
The only thing I requested out of that was I'd like to have eight thousand dollars. The radios are, were clear. I spoke to the radio shop yesterday morning. We are covered with them. Everybody that was supposed to get ready is due to three years of the program of the ARP is completed. And I think in Mr. Ronkin's email returned, we had forty couple thousand of excess funds. I don't know why. I guess there were some fire departments that may have scaled down operations and took some units out of service. But, I mean, when we bid it originally, we put it out to quotes, we had that money all allocated there, and it was based on the units in the field at the time. But it was a three-year program. And I do understand that there was a change in the radio shop when Mr. Gano passed away, so I don't know if something could have been overlooked.
Yeah, I think you've totally revamped the radios, which is awesome. The other thing is, if we'd get too many of the same too soon, they may outdate themselves, so...
That was my purpose of wanting to do it over a three-year.
Yeah.
I know it was a hassle, but we did a third, a third, a third, just because we were keeping up with technology. And five years down the road, we should be looking at, how many of us are wearing the same watch we had five, ten years ago? How many of us are using the same cellphone we had five years ago?
Yeah.
They're computers, that's what the radios are. They're just a computer, kinda like a cellphone, and they're obsolete by virtually today they put them in.
Did you, being this is our last meeting, Commissioners, before the end of the year, that money, from what I recall, needed to be completely allocated by the end of this year, so, and spent by the end of, or the beginning of 2026, or sometime in 2026. So, I think it would be smart for us to think about what to do with the excess money from the ARP that's left over. And I'm in favor of certainly helping them with furniture, and then the excess above that, you know, perhaps we could put towards the building or something, the EMS building.
Well, be honest with you, sir, I didn't put it in there because I didn't wanna feel like I was being selfish, but we would love to have a camera system, a security system. We don't have none. And if the crews are out in the middle of the night, someone could do something. I do not have a quote on what that would cost, but...
Well, I think we can certainly work out the, well, you applied for a grant for that. Is there any feedback on that, Ted?
No, I actually have talked to the Governor's Office multiple times, Darrell Coles a couple times, and Delegate Hillenbrand a couple times, and they've requested more information, more information, more information. I do know when they were supposed to come and give the school a grant, we were not on that, but to my knowledge, I don't think they came to give the school a grant yet. I was told there was gonna be several.
Yeah, yeah, the meeting was postponed a couple times. It's, I believe it's next week, the Governor's supposed to be coming in town.
So, I mean, we had requested sixty thousand from them for office furniture, appliances, and everything like that, security system and all. And when I talk security system, I'm talking about a camera system.
Sure, okay. No roundabout idea on that, Ted, in your experience with security?
To put in for the facility we got, I would guess it, it would not surprise me to be ten to twelve thousand, especially in today's economy, Aaron, which, the only thing we can do is get Mets or somebody, or raise off...
It's a shame Mr. Frye's not still living.
Yeah.
He was pretty fair. I remember it was, you know, a couple hundred dollars a door, a couple hundred dollars a window, and, you know, the main unit was a couple thousand or fifteen hundred, you could really figure out what it was gonna be. But anyways, I would certainly like to at least make a motion to make sure that money's allocated by the end of the year, so otherwise, we're giving it back to Uncle Sam.
Yeah, I mean, the share's forty-five, six-sixty, I think, here is what he's got. Now, these other four, they're already, they're gonna be, Aaron, your five-ten is gonna be utilized, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, the only one we got left in here, guys, with this would be the radio, and that's forty-five, six-sixty. Am I correct about that?
Yes.
Okay, so, the walk station and everything, they're gonna, that's all gonna be taken care of?
He said that's gonna work out.
Okay, and this is, okay. Yeah, I think we should allocate that to the HCSA for the, for the building.
Yeah. If that's a motion, Commissioner Hott, I'll second it.
Yes, that's a motion.
I have a motion and a second to take the remaining funds of the ARP zero-three radio update allocation and reallocate it back to the use for the EMS building. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you, Commissioners, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
That's a great help.
We're moving on here. We're a little ahead of schedule. Mr. Clerk, if we had any housekeeping?
There's one item that, from the last meeting, we discussed, the advertisement for the Director of Emergency Services Agency, and sent you, or gave you copies of what I did as far as trying to accommodate the ideas you had, an alteration of what was previously sent. You mentioned that you thought it would be useful, if you look down there, second sentence of the second paragraph, it says, "Prior experience in managing employees and a valid driver's license are required." I'm sorry, I'm gonna start with the first sentence. Education requirements, high school diploma, plus pass, background check, and drug screening must be a WVOE, MS-certified paramedic with five years' experience in active certifications to participate on emergency calls in need. That was my edit there. And then, prior experience, I added to the end of that sentence, financial management skills would be beneficial. Word that however you want, but that's the thoughts that came to my mind. So then, the only other addition was to put down that Hampshire County Commission is a big opportunity employee. If we, if you agree with this, we can go ahead and get it to the paper for publication today, and keep our submission deadlines on track.
Thank you for doing this, Eric, I appreciate it. Sorry it took a little while to get the Commissioners to...
Good enough.
...together on this. I definitely think that was time well spent, there's great facets added here, so I don't see any, unless Commissioner Eglinger, did you want the financial management wording any different, or?
No, I think that'll be fine.
Thank you.
I'm okay with that.
That's satisfactory. I'll have Bethany go ahead and send it. That's great, thank you, gentlemen. You approved this?
Yes, we did, yeah. We, and just to reiterate, we're gonna do Hampshire, Hardy, Mineral, Berkeley.
Well, I investigated the Wartensburg Journal, and the only thing I found for help wanted was costing five or six hundred dollars. So, how to make that circulation happen, one time, to review as part of a statewide discreet?
Could be something under the West Virginia Price Association.
Okay, so I'll investigate that.
I'm sure they're hooked up in the jobs or somebody.
We'll let me investigate that, and we'll try to get this spread further.
Okay, copy that.
Also, look at the online options available, zip recruiters and things like that.
Costs my money.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Moving on here to Central Hampshire Sewer Project. Kim brought on Boat Rights of Region Eight to discuss the ARPA funds committed. Good morning, how are you, Kim?
Good, how are you guys?
Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, I certainly appreciate all the work that you've done with that CDBG project, and all of the Commission. I thank you for your previous work on, especially those CDBG projects that seem to require paperwork after paperwork after paperwork. The reason that we're here today is because we understand that in the paperwork you've been given, there was a, an allocation or a commitment for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Central Hampshire Sewer Project. We have since learned that a portion of that, twelve thousand five hundred, fifty-seven dollars, was de-allocated, and from the ARPA funds. And we have some concerns regarding that. First of all, you know, it was a commitment made previously, and second, for me personally, in doing the grants and working with the other financing organizations, they have a long memory, and I'm really concerned that down the road, that if you persist with this de-allocation of that money, that the funding agencies have a long memory.
You're telling us that the funding agency's gonna hold a grudge against us and threaten to take funds away from us in the future?
Not threaten to take funds away from you, but perhaps make it more difficult to get funding approved. I've dealt with this in other entities where they do have a long memory, and that's my concern, my big concern. However, you know, a commitment was made, and we were certainly, we were not informed, I know that Bob informed the PSD, but we were, Region Eight was not informed of this de-allocation, and we were counting on that money to make the project viable.
May I ask, may I say something?
Yes, sir.
Well, first of all, guys, we did this, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, as far as arms, and Region Eight didn't have anything in it. We were the ones that paid the bills out, we're the ones that wrote the checks. You guys didn't, this money wasn't allocated to you at all. It was, it was an allocation, and three hundred and fifty thousand, it says in our project here, that it's supposed to be the front end, the front end for Sarun to do his engineering and all, and that. And then, when I was on, of course, I don't vote on the board on the PSD, but I was there, and I seen the invoice for legal fees. And I said, "ARPA does not, there's nothing in there that says anything about legal fees." And I said, "We're not gonna pay this." And I came to, and I talked to both Commissioners, and we all agreed that we're not paying twelve thousand dollars for legal fees that we didn't have a darn thing to do with in the beginning.
I understand.
We're the ones that give the money out, we committed it to the PSD, and we've paid everything except that legal fee, and this Commissioner is not gonna agree. This, and just me, I'm not gonna agree to that, because I don't, I don't like that. And I don't think, the thing, the thing that you just told us about, they have a long memory, I don't give a damn about their memory. You know, I don't care about that. I just think that we, as a Commission, shouldn't be paying legal fees that we didn't even have a thing to begin with.
Well, I guess, first of all, I should, should have probably explained that Region Eight is administering this project, which consists of several different funding agencies.
And you're right about that, but you wasn't administering this three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
We were, we were not, but we use that commitment when we apply for these other, other funds. They want, they want that letter to show where that, that we have that, that that three, project has that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And as far as the legal fees, we can adjust, we can do a budget amendment to pay for something other than legal fees. We could pay for Region Eight admin, or we could even possibly... We could pay for Region 8 admin, or we could even possibly put it in the construction.
Now that I could understand.
Yeah, so I can go on a little bit about the packet, I know it's a lot that I laid in front of you. The very first page, with the Bethany email from me and myself, was trying to figure out, like, what these funds were available for this project. Because like Kim had said, this project was a certain amount of money, $350,000 was coming from the County Commission. So then, I asked, you know, Bethany, how many, like, you see here, has the Central sent you all the invoices, paid for the Harvest Hill project? And then she sent me back everything that she had on file, as she called it, the Shank slash Harvest Hills project, looks like we had spent $337,443 and still have $12,557 left in the account allotted to the, out of the $350. So then, myself and Kim had to make a new Schedule B to show those funds, and then we allocated them to the PSC Attorney, and then that's what was declined at the closing draw. Every other paper that's in the packet, if you would go to the last three pages of the packet, and so, all of this is the invoices, that whole packet that's in the middle is those invoices that you guys have paid, reaching that $337,000. The last, like she had said, the third to last page was the commitment from the Commission signed, presented by Aaron Timbrook, I believe. Yeah, so that was your $350,000 commitment. And then, like Kim had said, if you do not want to pay for legal fees, I have a before and after budget revision that we have done. So, the budget revision, the before for the County Commission's last portion of that $12,557, the before was going to the PSC Attorney. If you would look at maybe an alternative to still pay that remaining $12,557, the after version, I split it up three different things, so we actually got with USDA, and they're willing to pay those attorney fees. So we were going to take that $12,557, go to the Region 8 admin, that was once coming from USDA, and then changing just some monies around with that funding to pay those. If not, it's going to have to come out of construction contingency, and then that's going to be less for the project.
And quite frankly, that's where I think it should come from. One of the things that I get very frustrated with in all of our projects, when the architect and engineers get a hold of this thing, everybody else is dead in order after that. They control it, they get all their money, they get their money up front. And then, the PSD or whatever other agency is doing this, they're responsible. They have, they take all the blame for things that don't go right, even though they don't have anything in it. I've seen them put in water lines going across property that shouldn't even been across, and they come to the PSD for that. So I get, I get very upset with that stuff. And as far as I'm concerned, that $12,000, you can take, you can get it where you want to, but if I was sitting here by myself, there's no way that the County Commission's going to pay that $12,000. And what was, what was the fee for anyone?
Pardon?
What was the legal fee?
The $12,557 in the closing draw was for the PSC Attorney, William Roebold.
Right, but you know why?
And that was only a portion of it, because the
His funding for his project, for his portion of this project is $35,000, to not exceed $35,000. His invoices up to date were only 33. $12,557 was coming from the remaining ARPA funds, and then others are coming from a different funding source to pay Mr. Roebold.
The, on all projects, I understand that there was some conflict with the PSC, with the town, and I understand the County Commission not wanting to get involved with that, but also, in every project, there's a, every water and sewer project, there's a PSC Attorney who has to present information to the PSC to determine whether or not a rate increase is needed, and also, if the project is needed, the PSC makes that determination.
Ah, yeah, I've heard everything, and I've been listening pretty closely, but just for the public and the people at home, I'd like to read the ARP sub-grant request to the County Commission, just to clarify what we thought the money was for. In a few short sentences, tell the Commission your objectives for this grant. This grant will provide a much-needed match for the other grants, including the WDA EEGF for an overall $11 million project to decommission the District's Harvest Hills Package Plant, WWTP, and tie this system into the existing Central Hampshire system, perform the most urgent upgrades at Frenchburg to allow it to meet the Chesapeake Bay watershed, affluent limits, and competently meets its stated average daily design flow of 200,000 gallons GPD, and perform miscellaneous existing collection system rehabilitation to reduce inflow and infiltration and repair aging infrastructure. The contribution from the County Commission on this project can be successfully applied to the front-end design phase expenses, which will be expended by October 2023, should there be a deadline for use of these funds. Which part of that, and I'm not being smart, I'm asking you, which side, which portion of this statement are you tying these legal fees to, that we allegedly were making allowable in our motion?
Simply the front-end fees.
Successfully applied to the front-end design phase expenses which be expended. So anyways, if there's a way for us to put these funds towards the construction, and let me ask a question, the $12,000, is that to pay, you know, the PSD to fight with the town of Romney?
A lot of that was, yes. Yeah, a lot of those, a lot of that money was, was there. And that's something, to me, that we, as County Commission, wouldn't have bothered in at all.
Okay.
And that's our money. That's our money that we allocate, that's not our money, as hell as taxpayers' money. That's money that we allocated to them, to the front-end part of it, as far as Sarone doing it, that's basically what, what we allocated that $350,000 for. And when they came, that was the last bill I think we got, was the Attorney fee. And that's, that's when I said, "I don't believe we should be paying this." And I, if you recall, and David, it's been, it's been months. Back when, this is, this was six, I don't know how long ago this was we'd done this. And you're just now coming down for this.
That's what, like, we just now found out, like he said, Region 8 wasn't a part of this administration with those funds, so we didn't know that those were even happening. So when the $350 is allocated to the project, I didn't know it even, and it had been spent already.
Okay. Well, let me restate what my comment there, I said, "Was this money for the PSD to fight with the town of Romney?" What I meant to say was, "This money for the PSD to defend itself against frivolous, ridiculous lawsuits by the town of Romney, when we could have sat down as grownups and leaders of this county, just like we're doing right now, and worked all these 15, 20, $30,000 problem, problems out while the lawyers get rich, you know, it helps nothing. It helps absolutely nothing. Every time this county wants to advance anything with water, which helps the town and helps the entire county, the PSD is being sued, and that's the big reason I'd like to stay out of it. If we can find a way to put these funds towards the construction of the project, or anything other than these legal fees, I'm in favor of it."
And that's what, the budget revision at the end, I have those going to Region 8 admin fees, if you would, if you would accept that.
But if you don't want to accept the Region 8 admin, I
I can, I can try to do another budget amendment to get them towards construction or anything that you'd be willing to pay.
Okay. And I would like to go back to what you said, Mrs. Rundle. I'd like to name the funding sources you're referring to, when you say they have a long memory. Which funding sources were you referring to?
IJDC, USDA, WDA.
Okay.
Here's most of them, Dave.
Like I said, I don't think that they will deny, but it makes it a lot harder whenever there's an issue with an entity. I've gone through that with another entity.
Well, let me, let me say this, and I'm getting off base a little bit on this, and I, but I have a long memory too. And we, over the years, these projects, if you recall back when we did the Health Department project, with the, with the mobile home, or the mobile unit, not the
Yes, sir.
The first bid that came out, we was, we was under about $7,000 under. We was fine. I'd be damned if they didn't drag that thing out and drag it out. Till at the end of the day, it was $60,000 that they won, and they come to us. And we said, "No, we're not paying $60,000." And that's happened more than once, and I don't, I don't like that either, you know?
With the CDBG funding agencies, they say you have to have at least two?
I don't care what they say, I'm telling you, at the end, at the end of the day, at the end of the day
I find it very frustrating as well.
It is, it is frustrating.
And they, CDBG did come up with the additional monies to take
I know they did, yeah, because they didn't have any choice.
Right.
Because we, the County Commission said, "We're not paying that."
And I don't blame you.
Anyway, I'm, I'm done, I'm okay.
Are you okay with the funds being used for other parts of the project that are not legal fees?
In my heart, I'm not, but I'm going to, I'm going to tell you that I think it's, it's, I want you, you and Brian to think about this. I'm, I just, I guess I'm hard-headed about this thing.
You're the hedge, sir. You're the hedge.
I think if we can get verification in writing that it's not being used for the legal fees, I can go along with it, Commissioner. I will say, it doesn't sit well with me, doesn't lay well on my heart, like Commissioner Hart said. And I'll echo your words of the frivolous, you know, lawsuits or lawsuit that we've, that we're, we deal with there. So I don't want any part of it in any way, shape, or form to go towards anything for that. But again, if we can, if we can get it in writing that it's for construction, then I'd be all right with it. Doesn't lay well, but I'll be all right with it.
And I love working with Region 8, I mean, especially Mr. Lively. I want the relationship to be a good relationship, and I know you all didn't ask for this, and now you're in the middle, so I hope you don't feel you're, it's us versus you. It's not, the issues with, well, the things that were stated, but I, you know, I know I'm getting off on a rabbit hole, but I wish the taxpayers of the town and of the county really, really knew how much taxpayer money was wasted on arguments that could be worked out in a sit-down meeting between grownups. It absolutely blows my mind. I mean, that money that could pave streets in the town.
Right.
You know, that money could put another water line in. And as Commissioner Hart said, the lawyers are whistling Dixie all the way to the bank, you know? They don't care, they thrive on conflict. It's their job, and I don't blame them. That's their job, that's what they do. So anyways, do I hear a motion to allow the excess funds to be reallocated to a construction facet of the project, gentlemen?
That was my motion, Mr. President. Yes, sir.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, gentlemen. A motion and a second to reallocate the excess funds to a construction portion of the project, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion passed, two to one.
Thank you. It may take us a couple days to get that
Budget revision.
Budget revision done and approved. I don't want to send you something that says that it's okay, and then the funding agencies not agree.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
That's okay. I'm okay.
Yeah, I thought, I thought you may. But there may come a day where, you know, counties can individually afford their own program like that.
The only thing that gets me is I, I see it on, I see it so much.
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't blame you.
Anyway, that's okay.
Moving on here, we're right on the schedule, gentlemen. Frontier Communications Support Letter Request. I really, really hope, you know, because we didn't want to get an illegal deal, that they would threaten to withhold funds from, and make our taxpayers suffer, I'd like to go on record saying that. That's, that's absolutely, I don't know if I've ever heard anything like that, sitting in here, that they would threaten to take money away from us. Anyways, how you doing, Mr. Cox?
Good morning, gentlemen. We have recently, Frontier Communications, Government Services Agencies have reached out to the Hampshire County Commission for a letter of support, supporting their application for the West Virginia BEAD Program with the Broadband Equity Access and Development Program. It's a fiber project that they're looking to expand across Hampshire County. And while our, our relationship with Frontier had, in the past, has been foreign in many cases, it hasn't always been the best relationship with some of the issues we've had with the Public Service Commission, 911 outages and things like that. They are making a concerted effort to work on updating broadband across Hampshire County, and while I'm cautiously optimistic, well, and again, I drafted a letter stating that there's some things that we would like to see in the projects, that being, no location being funded through this program has already, or will be receiving funding from any other state, state or local agency, I do see I'm misspelling there, either now or in the near future. Any locations that are publicly funded by any other source before the grant awards are announced will be removed from the BEAD program funding. So, that being stated, if anything else would come up before this program would be administered, that those funds would be released, and that would be, this would be my recommendation, something of the wording of this. So, and also, it's hard to see on the map, but the red areas are the unserved and underserved areas that they would be hitting. Some of the areas surprised me a little bit, but they did assure me that areas that are in the ARDOF funding cycle will not be served, duplicated funding with BEAD. I think their number was, West Virginia Department of Broadband went from 160,000 addresses across the state to 144.
So, their bidding as to be provider on these locations, and this will be fiber from the pole to the home mainly?
Correct.
I know this is a, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but do they, who are their competitors bidding on this BEAD money that we know of?
So Comcast, for sure, has reached out and requested a letter of recommendation as well, and when I asked for information of where they were interested in serving, and mentioned that they were in Hampshire County prior to our broadband opportunities that we recently went through, and said that they abandoned their project in Hampshire County previously, I haven't heard anything back from them.
Yeah, I was told that Frontier's the only one. Comcast may, but I was told that Frontier's the only one. Again, guys, I have, I have a problem with Frontier. If we could get a guarantee on some of these areas, I would, you know, if I could see something in writing that says they would, they were actually going to serve here, here, and here, that would, that would please me a lot. I do like how you've done the, redone the letter, using the word cautiously in there. I've dealt with Frontier from day one. We've had them before us, and they're, and this whole county, guys, has, I've received phone call, like, a phone call over the phone calls, like the phone call over the years, about service from Frontier. Even today, when they're putting in this fiber, the only reason they're putting it in is because hardiness already coming in and put pressure on it. And they're putting it in, but even now, I could call some people that will tell me that they came and they hooked up and they left the line lay on the ground. And, and then, when they call, it's five to 10 days before they're going to get any, any service. So that going, even if they put the fiber in, the service is still going to be lousy. And, and it's not our local people that, I mean, I think our local people with Frontier do a tremendous job, but it's, it's the upper echelon that, that lets us down. It's just, and, and we've had them, like I said, we've had them sitting here, and then I'm thinking, we didn't have any redundancy up there. And I think maybe, I don't know whether you ever hear yet, David, but Nathan and, and the sheriff and I sit down with, with Frontier, I don't know how many times, with their lawyers, with their engineers, and tried to get this redundancy. And because you called that, you couldn't call that one more. And then, we were here, we was back in this room one day, talking about this, Senator Manchin was here, it was a Guck Center, I think, anyway. We were talking about this, and Scott Sherman was here. And I'll be darned, and Scott said, well, I think I can correct that. And so we went to Frontier, and I say we, I think Nathan, the sheriff, did, and went to Frontier and told them, and they was reluctant, but finally they, they did, let, let, he helped him with that and got it, got it fixed. But they're gone, they're just, they're just hard to deal with. But on the other hand, if we turn around and say no, then there's going to be people out there that don't have service, and can't maybe get, I, I don't think this letter is going to make a ticker's name when we're in it, but, but I just, that's just my thought.
Aaron, I, I've been reading all the information, as you've been sending it over the last few months, and, you know, about the BEAD program and stuff, and I understand it's, it's pretty, it has some pretty, I can't think of the word, we'll say some...
Stringent standards?
Yes, it has some pretty strict and stringent standards. You know, with, with your, with you being a fellow that deals in this a lot, do you think Frontier can actually meet those standards? Because you, and I, and I've, you know, I gotta say, in the past, they've promised to meet standards that they haven't met. So you think they can meet these?
I would like to think that the West Virginia Office of Broadband has done a diligent job of putting enough red tape in the way. This is an opportunity where red tape actually...
Holds people accountable.
Holds people accountable.
Okay.
And the flip side of that, it also keeps people out of the game.
Well, that's, I don't, I don't know about that, that part of it.
So if there, if, if, again, there's going to be areas that, that our broadband program may never be able to touch, just because of, it's not, you can't get there from here in many cases, if, if that makes sense. So I'd like to think that they would be honest in their efforts to follow up. But again, I, I think I've word, used the word cautiously probably too many times in this letter, but...
I don't think too many times, Aaron. But let me reiterate what, what Commissioner Hott said, you know, I, I've, I've been here eight years now, and, and probably, you know, one of the top, top three things to be worrisome to a commissioner, and, and, you know, internet broadband's right there in the top three. So, and Frontier has a lot to do with that. And we, as a county, took an aggressive approach, and, you know, finally said, you know, we, we've tried to work with Frontier, and, and we were kind of a singled-out county that took a, a different approach, and, and we've been fairly successful with that. But I, but I do see, you know, and I'll, I'll use my own home and farm as an example, you know, I, all that I have available to me is Frontier. And I know recently they have been replacing some copper with fiber, and they did at my home. And I'll say my internet is better, but I'll say this, it took them almost a month to put a simple line from my pole to my bedroom window, came back about six times, multiple phone calls. I mean, it was just, the, the, the business approach to it all is just terrible. I'm sorry, but it, it is, it's just, but, again, like Commissioner Hott said, you know, that, that's all I have offered. So, you know, when it's all you got, you have to cautiously support. So, you know, I'm in favor of cautiously support, but, phew, it's definitely cautiously.
Yeah, and I spoke with Comcast and Mr. Cox the same day, and, and seems they're only interested in bidding on the RFP for the Greenspring Springfield Sector of the County. So, I mean, the overarching point is, as both of you stated, you know, that they more or less, whether we like it or not, have a huge stranglehold on the drastic majority of internet service provider locations in the county. And I think we've taken the hard-line approach, you know, by creating competition, and you gentlemen, it's one of the very things I was most impressed with coming in, created the first public-private partnership in the state to show the other, you know, monopolies that no matter how little we are, we'll stand up to you, and we'll do whatever we have to. But like, like I said, we, we've tried the hard-line approach, we've created competition, and look what the fruits of it have been. Look at how they're, and I truly believe that they're serving these locations and bidding on these RFPs because of what you gentlemen did before I got here, and what we've continued to do. So maybe it's time that we come back to the table and, and try to work with them again, and, and see what we can do, because ultimately, that's what's going to give more taxpayers internet, so.
One other question, Aaron. You said, like, our, our current funding we have to improve on certain projects we have going on now, is, is there going to be overlap? Is, does BEAD overlap that? I, I thought you said that it didn't, that it wouldn't...
Shouldn't. See, the BEAD was originally, I thought...
Do you understand what my question is? I, I didn't word it too well. Is, is it good if...
So the major, the major federally funded projects that we've completed, like the southeastern end of the county along 259, Cape and Bridge Project, and then along, a lot of it along Route 50 through ARPA, is, has been removed, and Hardy, and the Kirby Area Project that we completed, much of that Hardy was very adamant about getting those sites removed from the BEAD program. So that's why the mapping was the hardest part of this program for the state. So at this time, there's no current projects that we have that have already been funded through any other federal source that is being covered by the BEAD.
Okay.
A small, if there are, they're a very small percentage.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that, that whenever we were in the state auditors thing, that they were taught, touched on that a little bit, where, you know, that's basically what the BEAD is trying to do, is take every, Connect America, ARDOF, and find any areas that outline, and try to fund those. So anyways...
I do, I do see two typographical errors, one being the West Virginia Department needs corrected, and then, and point number, bullet point number one, remove the word "have," but I can correct those and send that out. But if you guys have any other recommendations, I would take them before we, we take the approval of Commissioner Cannon's, President Cannon's signature. If so, if you so choose, Jeff.
Well, thank you for adjusting the letter there. As I've, I've been thinking about it the last couple, the last week or so, last couple days, I, that would be my, would have been my suggestion, gentlemen, is a support for the, for the sake of the county, and for the sake of those that don't have any other choice but, but Frontier, and which, you know, can be a large portions of our county in some ways. So in my thinking, the last couple days, I, that's what I would have liked to seen is a, is a support letter, but also explain, you know, put it out there that it hadn't been an easy road for Hampshire County with Frontier. So I'd move that we accept Aaron's proposed letter with the typos being fixed as a motion for the support letter.
I have a motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Motion passed, two to one, to authorize the president to sign.
One second. That one's highlighted.
Okay.
We'll get you one that's not highlighted.
Just say, you send it to me, I can get a real range, go a letterhead.
Okay.
We'll get that to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Moving on here, maintenance items or...
Justice, we have exonerations presented by the assessor.
Yeah.
Is it sitting over?
Exactly.
Oh, Glenn Dillon's right.
He got, he's got the same word.
Okay.
by the assessor at today's meeting.
Second.
A motion and a second that the exonerations be approved as presented by the tax assessor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed.
A little lucky, you were in jail. You told me that, and...
Any sign? Yeah. Do we have any further business?
I would remind you that Floyd Christmas party on Friday, the 13th, 11:30 to noon, he is new, 11:30 to 1:30, he is new. And I'm going to be ordering the food this afternoon, so thank you for the, your contribution to that. And also, I've prepared an idea of dates for the year 2025 for you to consider. Give us some thought, we'll set the calendar and build the first meeting in January, which by mistake will be the second, for business day, the 2nd of January, to establish your leadership of the commission and set the calendar. But that's just something for you to think about. And the other thing I have, I mean, we have...
Eric, when we did the, just the one meeting in July there, for the fair, does that cause an excessive paperwork or anything?
No, no, it's, it's, yeah, we just put it down.
Piles up a little bit?
See what you all want to do. I wasn't sure what the fair was going to be, honestly.
True, okay.
But no, I, I don't mind that at all.
Okay.
And I presumed on the evening meetings, same you've done, so I just put that there for you guys to be thinking about it, see what you want to do.
What is the 2nd, David? What, David?
Is it 22nd of July?
No, I'm talking about our, the one, what is the 2nd, Eric?
It's a Thursday.
It's a Thursday?
January 2nd is Thursday, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's, that's what else.
Yeah, Christmas and New Year's Day on Wednesday this year.
I reckon Justice want to give a whole week off, huh, on it?
I was trying not to say anything.
Right.
It's his last chance.
All right.
Is that over here?
Yeah, I got mine.
You looked at him, man? I looked at the invoices.
There it is, sir.
All right. It's pretty thick, that's where we paid all the poll workers, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
You had to be here.
Eric, I want to contribute to that meeting, I mean, to the meeting stuff. Just let me know how much I have, okay?
Yeah, I'll have it Friday.
Okay.
Because the poll workers are in there, remind me of the election stuff, we have gotten our, have our grant money back for the equipment that we purchased, so that has run its whole circuit.
Jail bill in this one, gentlemen? Did y'all see it?
It may be early for that.
Okay.
I didn't see it, but then he can be.
She commented the other day that it was cheap. Ow. It was low.
I believe it could be addressed under grants and maintenance, but the, the allocation for the governor on the, the money for the volunteer fire departments, did you gentlemen get that letter?
Yeah, I seen that.
I believe that's, did we move on that, Eric? I know we, we had the letter, and we normally split it equally, but I, I think we can address that under grants and maintenance. You agree? Would that be all?
Yeah, that's how I made it.
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to entertain a motion to disperse that money to the volunteer fire departments equally.
I'll move that we do that.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. A motion and a second that the county commission distribute the fire funds issued by the governor equally among all volunteer fire departments in the county. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed. And I'll entertain a motion to approve the invoices as presented, gentlemen?
I'll move that we approve the invoices as presented.
The second?
A motion and a second to approve the invoices as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed. Well, gentlemen, if I hear no further business before the commission, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn Commissioner Hott's final meeting.
You want to see, just waiting, I guess she might have...
Oh, ma'am, sir, did you all have any discussion or comments for the commission today?
Okay.
Thank you for coming in.
I move to adjourn.
Thank you for coming in.
I move adjourn.
Want to slam the gavel? Meeting adjourned. Thank you for coming in.